Trish, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. It's four o'clock, so I will call to order this meeting of the Grand County Commission. Present, we have Evan Clapper, Bill Winfield, Mike McCurdy, Mary McGann, myself, Kevin Walker, we have Trish Adine on Zoom, and Jacques Hadler is not here presently, but we expect him later on Zoom. So the first item on our agenda is, since this is the first meeting of the year, nomination and appointment for the commission chair and vice chair. Eric?
I would like to nominate Jacques Hadler to continue as chair and Kevin Walker to continue as vice chair.
I'll second that.
Okay, so motion by Mary and second by Trish. Sure.
I'd like to propose an amendment to that. I'd like to see Commissioner Jacques Hadler continue as chair and Bill Winfield as second.
As vice.
Vice chair.
As vice chair, sorry.
Second to the amendment? You're allowed to second if you want to. Okay, so seconded by Bill? Any discussion?
I think there's certainly some room for some discussion here, I think with the fact that we have somewhat of a division amongst leadership on this commission, that it would be good in an effort on both sides parts, I think, to do a little shared leadership here, so that both sides are familiar with what goes into that pocket moving forward on a regular basis. Just think that it's something that would show good faith on both sides parts.
Yeah, I guess I, you know, I want to continue as vice chair partly. I do think there are other ways to stay involved. I also think it's worthwhile if the, you know, the leadership is more in sync with the majority of the commissions. So I guess I'm, I will vote for myself as I just chat around. And I, for the minutes, Commissioner Hadler is on Zoom now. Okay. Call for, yeah. Let's go ahead and vote, and so we're voting on the amendment. So a yes vote is a vote for Jacques as chair and Bill Winfield as vice chair, and a no vote would send us back to the original motion where I'm vice chair. So all in favor? So Bill and Mike and all opposed? Okay, so it looks like it fails two to five with Commissioners McCurdy and Winfield voting in favor.
That keeps it originally.
Yeah, so, right, okay, so now we're back to the main, to the original motion. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'll just say that I believe this sets a stage. This is not a show of good faith on you guys' part, and I think that there's a lot of strength in looking at having the two different opinions on this board, being able to be a part of what goes on to that agenda. So that's all I've got to say on it.
Okay, and I will note that, you know, any commissioner can get things on the agenda. So I think we do have a pretty open process for that. Okay, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mike, I didn't see you.
I voted, I voted, just stay the same. If you can't go, I would stay the same.
Okay, sorry, I missed you.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that was six one with Commissioner Winfield opposed. Okay, next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is Citizens to Be Heard. We have time for citizens to be heard both now and also at six o'clock, though this is a short agenda. So I don't recommend waiting till six o'clock, we might be done by then. So is there anyone in the chambers who would like to comment on any item of the agenda except the public hearing? Do we have?
I don't think we have a public hearing today, do we?
Yeah, we do for the CDPG.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so anything but CDPG, or actually anything, so Pete Gross? And please state your name and try to keep it to two minutes.
First, I wanted to wish you all the Happy New Year, and I thank you for all your service this past couple of years. I know it's, I would not want to be in any of your positions. Also, I wanted to congratulate potentially other members, and I think Commissioner Walker does too. I was looking up their spot, the US has what, one out of a million PhDs? We have at least one and possibly two are soon to be PhDs on this commission, which I think is pretty impressive. Anyway, that's sort of aside. Also, I want to mention, a friend of mine is the executive director of the Charter School, and I understand that Bill Winfield volunteered his time and equipment to move a container, a shipping container, to a different part of that, so I thank him for that. Now, now we'll get to my usual topic. But, oh, the other thing I want to note is, I noticed there's no asterisks here, nobody's smoking, and I think that's wonderful. I mean, we recognize, a couple of decades ago, Utah was one of the first states to enact a law against, you know, to protect people from involuntary exposure to cigarette smoking. And so I also want to point out that noise pollution, I mean, air pollution kills, oh, where's my figure? That leads to about 100,000 premature deaths between 1990 and now, it was updated to about 60,000. Thank you in part, thanks in part to actions that we have taken. I'd also like to point out the World Health Organization, this air pollution is one of, is the primary cause of premature deaths, and noise pollution is a close second. And as you know, we have a disproportionate representation of PhDs in our commission. We also have a disproportionate amount of motor vehicle noise in a county of only about 10,000 people. And there's two primary user groups that I think contribute to most of the noise in Grand County, a significant majority of it. One is illegally modified, uprod mufflers, we've all heard the modified, you know, sports cars revving around town. The second one is uprod vehicles. And so I've had several conversations with one of the UTV outfitter owner, renters, and actually, they probably showed me a couple of their quieter machines. And during my most recent conversation with that same person, he said to me, quote, "We need to do something about this noise issue." And so I think to myself, yeah, we do. So I have a suggestion. First of all, I'd point out, both the city and the county updated their noise ordinances two years ago, specifically in response to all the complaints about excess noise. And as far as I know, today, we haven't had a single noise ordinance violation issued by the city or the county. The city, to their credit, the police department proactively was pulling over speeders, and then when they did. So I would like to propose, this was inspired by one of these UTV outfitters. They turn over their fleets almost annually, mostly outfitters do, people that want to rent, you know, two, three year old vehicles, they run. I would like to propose that the county and the city, it's not your position, enact an ordinance that require them to purchase, all new purchases be the quietest available technology. It's not particularly onerous, they exist. The cost could be incidental, but the benefits would be immeasurable. It would improve physical experience, residential quality of life, and that would also, when they turn over their fleet following, whenever, they're putting more quieter vehicles on the market, and it's going to encourage manufacturers to start marketing quieter. Anyway, thank you for your time, sorry to go over time, I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, so that, that's set for citizens to be heard. No presentations or department reports, so commission member disclosures. Does any commissioner have anything to disclose relative to anything on agenda today? Yes, Mike?
Both me and my wife work for the county, and I am part of the ADO development conversation that we'll be having on agenda items in the future. I can't be the agenda items. Number five, number four, number five, I will not be partaking. I will be reduced.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so general commission reports and Peter's considerations. Evan, are you ready to go?
With the holidays and the end of the month, I don't believe that I have any official business since our last meeting.
Okay, so continuing, Bill?
Sure, I attended via Zoom the local emergency planning committee that Cora puts on, mentioned that there were a couple of upcoming safety trains that would happen, one on pipeline safety on the 7th of February, and another one at the airport on March 7th. I also have continued in the centrally assessed, locally assessed issue with the tank farm out on I-70, and I'm working on that with Debbie Swayze as well as with Mr. Peters, to come up with a proper way to assess that tank farm and also part of our ongoing issues with the centrally assessed Mid-American Pipeline, and that's still ongoing. And then I'd like to refer back to the small business owners who spoke at Citizens to Be Heard and mention the difficult times they are experiencing, experiencing in the economic downturn with no end in sight, which also impacts our local workforce, also struggling to make ends meet. And so this is why I raise my concerns about the commission voting themselves a poll on the race. And to be clear, my question, if we cared about our community, was not pointed at any single commissioner on this board, it was pointed at all of us. It was a point that I thought needed to be made, that we were affecting the locals, and I think there was some confusion, that maybe I was singling somebody out with that. So just like to clarify that portion, and I think that's all I got.
Thanks, Bill and Mike.
I am follow-up Evan, no official business, wrapping up the end of the year. Several upcoming this month, but nothing to report.
Thanks. Eric?
I had, all of my meetings were squeezed into the two weeks between the first meeting and second meeting. It was crazy. I was running from one meeting to another. But the nice part about it is I haven't had any meetings since the last meeting, so I guess it was worthwhile grabbing them all together. And so I don't have anything to report, other than, Bill, you did point me out during that discussion. You said, Commissioner McGann, it would be. I went back and listened to the recording.
It was meant for the entire body, Mary, it wasn't meant to sing me out.
Okay, next, we have, let's go to Jacques on Zoom.
Yeah, thank you. I actually, for once, have nothing to report. I am on the emergency agencies board, and I was actually traveling that day, so I very much appreciate that Bill was able to attend that, and thanks for doing so, Bill. But just been traveling and happy, happy new year to everybody. Thanks.
Thanks, Jacques. Trish?
Um, yeah, excuse me, I don't, I did not go into any meetings in the last couple of weeks, but I did actually want to address the citizens to be heard from the last meeting also. You know, we had a lot of small business owners speak to, you know, concerned about the local economy, and I completely understand that. I looked up a few things today and just kind of wanted to speak to the US travel economy in general. And basically, they, I read a number of studies, and one was a poll that stated, you know, travel was down countrywide, and the number one reason that people weren't traveling was lack of money. We know that the elevation, elevation of both inflation and interest rates have pulled down the worldwide GDP, not only the US GDP. The growth rate is down to 2.8, where in the previous year it was 3.4. So, you know, overall, travel is struggling. And, you know, one of the other pieces to that was basically people stated that higher airfare and lodging costs were one of the big motivators for lack of travel. So I'm not, you know, trying to state that, you know, we should help wherever we can, but we do need to note that that downturn is not just felt by our economy. And the other thing I want to state is, one of the individuals, Lori McFarland, stated that it was harder to make a living in Moab last year, which we all acknowledge, but she also stated that it was extremely important to diversify our economy, which is odd to me, because we know that at the beginning of 2023, Lori was one of those that testified in support of House Bill 416, that was sponsored by Phil Lyman, that ended the pilot program that allowed Grand County to use TRT on economic diversification. So I just wanted to point that out, that if she feels that that's of importance, the ending of that carve-out in TRT was a really, that was a hit to our, to our attempts to diversify our economy. That's it for me, thanks.
Thanks, Trish. Like many of the others, I have not have a whole lot of meetings since the last commission meeting. So how much to report on there? I do think, you know, we've kind of, in little bits and pieces, been discussing these issues of, you know, the local economy and advertising, traveling, all those things. And hopefully, we can figure out a way to have a kind of more organized, focused discussion at some time, you know, near the beginning of the year. I think it's an important issue, and we all have opinions on it, and so we should try to, you know, have a discussion, try to make some progress, so it's my two cents worth on that.
And I'm excited about that they're doing that study, what is it, Trails to the Future, which I think is going to give us a huge amount of information on where we are economically and ways to move forward.
Okay, elected official reports, I don't see any action. Oh, Stephen, yeah, sorry, you're on Zoom. Anything to report?
Just, just briefly, wanted to let everyone know, it's, it's the volume okay? Sorry, I've got a fan on because no AC down here.
We can hear you fine.
Excellent. I just wanted to let everybody know, we're going to have training again on open gifts, conflict of interest, and grandma training. It'll be probably in the first week of February or in the latter half of January. It will be recorded and available, and all are expected to take that training, that's an important training. I haven't had any meetings. I did want to point out, there was kind of an item that raised about the county attorney's budget. I just wanted to note, last year, my office was $173,942 under budget. So I think that we're making efforts to make sure we're being cost-effective, and apart from that, we look forward to a good 24, and I wish everybody a happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Commission administrator report.
Yes. First, I had a plan to start putting a document in the package that just gave quick updates on some of the larger projects we've all been tasked with, and I failed to do that, but it will be in the next one. But one of the main projects would be the Spanish Valley Pathway. We'll be reaching out, Dan and I are going to chat with Stephen, because he's learned a few things that we're hoping to change the policy for runway acquisitions to incorporate that, should make it much easier for both the county and the residency involved in the process. And I'm also hoping to have the ICA Independent Contractor Agreement for the acquisitions on the next agenda. Also, on the next agenda, this might be exciting for some people. We will hopefully have a social media policy, and that is ahead of going live with some county social media accounts. So I definitely want to make sure that that's in place before we go live. More to come on that. And it's the CIB time of year, so we'll be sending out the CIB list to all the entities that participate for their updated items. And the big thing that we all have to remember is that projects have to be on that list. So I'll send that to all of you, and if there's anything you want us to add, just let me know. And I think that's our very end.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us to agenda item number two, which is volunteer citizen appointments to county boards and commissions. We have several of these. The first one is for the Council of Aging. I'm the liaison to that board. And there's, there's one applicant, Suzanne Martin. So I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make that motion. I move to approve the appointment of Suzanne Martin to serve on the Council on Aging, with the term expiring at 12, term expiring 12/31/2026.
Okay, I think Evan had his hand up first. Bill, you were at distant third on that. Um, okay, so seconded by Evan. Further discussion? It's like, there's none, all in favor? And all opposed? And that passes unanimously? My agenda's a little funky on my screen here, so let me know if I miss. Okay, the next, we have the library board and Mary McGann.
Aren't you the liaison for that?
I believe Trish took that over, but I'm happy to present if.
Well, I can present, I can. Well, the library board met an open meeting on 11/2 and reviewed all applicants and submitted and interviewed all qualified applicants for the two approaching vacancies. The board voted to forward the recommendation of applicant Roland List to the County Commission for Appointment with the Term Expiring in 12/31. Thus, I move to approve the appointment of Roland List to serve on the library board with the term expiring 12/31/2027.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Clapper. Further discussion? Okay, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? And that passes unanimously? Did you vote?
Yes. I just was looking at my next one.
Okay, next, next, we have Solidway Special Service District.
Yes, Solidway Special Service District met on December 13th. There was one, only one applicant, he was already serving on the board, so the board voted to send a recommendation for Chad Harris. Thus, I move to reappoint Chad Harris to the Solidway Special Service District Board with the term ending December 31st, 2025.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner McCurdy. Discussion? Okay, it's called for a vote, all in favor? That passes unanimously? Next is the Travel Council. That's you again, Mary.
That's me. Just to let me get to it. Okay. We had interviewed many people, quite a few people applied, and there was much discussion at the board meeting on 12/12. And it was after much discussion, it was moved to reappoint Alex, if I can say his name without, Growinski, to serve on the Moab Area Travel Council with the term ending 12/31/2027.
Is there a second? Sorry, Commissioner Clapper seconds, any discussion? It's like not, so I'll call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? That passes unanimously. So next, Thompson Springs Special Service District.
Yep, that one's me. Can everyone hear me well?
Yes, we can.
Great. So we had two openings, we met on January, or December 13th. The board had two openings, one was the regular opening with the term starting first of the year, and the second one was a term that was vacated by a board member. We interviewed two people for the two positions, Brenda Rogers and Jamie Rourke. Both interviewed well. In the meeting, we, we did have discussion about Jamie Rourke. Jamie worked very recently, registered to vote in the Thompson Springs Service District. The positions that were voted to approve, and those three people on the three board, were Brenda for the remainder of the terms, that would be a one-year term, and Jamie Rourke for the full term for those two positions.
Okay. Mike?
I move to approve the appointment of Brenda Rogers and Jamie Rourke to serve on the Thompson Springs Special Service Water District Board, with Brenda Rogers' term, Brenda Rogers' term expiring 12/31/24, and Jamie Rourke's term expiring 12/31/2026.
Second by Commissioner Winfield.
Oh, yeah, do you mind if I ask a question, Jacques?
No, no, definitely not.
Does Jamie live in Thompson now? So I thought it was from, like, Carbondale.
Yeah, so Jamie, and that was, that was a topic of a lot of discussion there, and I was going to elaborate on that. Jamie does not live there, he does own property inside the district, and he did register to vote inside the district, which I, when checking with folks, it looks like, and Stephen, please feel free to jump in here, it looked like the qualifier here is that they must be registered to vote inside the district. But, but you're absolutely right, Jamie lives in, I believe it's rifle, and owns property, and is working on developing his property in Thompson inside the district.
And from my point of view, Jacques and I had the ability to talk briefly about this matter. Based on the information that I've received, I have some concerns. I think that we can look into this matter a little bit more before we go ahead and appoint somebody to this, to this seat. While we don't have the authority to require the Thompson Special Service District While we don't have the authority to require the Thompson Special Service District to make a new recommendation, I think if we had additional time, we could maybe encourage them to kind of flesh out this process just a little bit more.
So Stephen, if I understood you correctly, you're suggesting that maybe we postpone this decision until the next meeting?
Correct. Based on, based on the information that I received, I think that would probably be beneficial so that we can make sure, um, everybody's a correct applicant for the seat that they're being in, and we don't want, yeah, and, and we don't want to go ahead and try to do something and then have to undo it. So I don't think there's any harm in postponing it for one, uh, one meeting, and we can reach out to them and, and make sure the process was done correctly, and that everybody, uh, that applied did so knowing what the requirements are.
Stephen, a quick question, when, or when you're, uh, speaking to this, and I, and I agree with you, I think, I think it's a prudent way to go. Um, are you just speaking of the, uh, the full term that Jamie was nominated for? Or, or are you also speaking of the term Brenda was, uh, going to finish? Uh, because I, I don't, I don't think there was any question about Brenda's, um, application at all. So, so in, if, if you're fine with it, I think my recommendation would be to approve Brendan now, especially as we're short board members on that board. It would be nice to have someone going forward, but, but again, I'd defer to you on that.
No, I, I think if there's no question about the other applicant, I, I think that's perfectly fine. As long as they have legitimate choices and they selected those individuals, that's what we want to make sure. So I'm fine with them going forward on the second named individual and then pausing on the other recommendation. So that's, that's where I'd be. I don't have any reason to believe that there is anything improper with the other applicant. Not to say that there is anything improper with Mr. Rourke, but if the question's been raised about where he resides, I think that's something that definitely needs to be considered.
Thank you, Stephen.
So, sorry, I can amend my own? Um, yeah, but look, I, I mean, before I amend it, I have some other questions. I, I'm just wondering, I, I, I don't, I don't know anything about this. I'm, I'm relying on you guys. But, um, if it did turn out that there was a, you know, unfixable problem with one of the applicants, do we want the single applicant to fill the, the short term or the long term?
I, I think, and so I, I was at the meeting when we approved them, and I, I very much remember Brenda being more interested in the short term and, and filling the, in filling the breach of the, of the, um, uh, vacated spot on the board. I, I think she said she was more interested in, in doing it for one year and then maybe looking at renewing after that. So I feel comfortable putting her forward to that position.
Okay, um, so Mike, would you like to?
Yes.
And so we can, we can either do a formal amendment, which is what we've also done, or if you say you want to change your motion and there's no objection, then we can do that slightly more quickly.
Changing the motion as spoken by, uh, Stephen stocks.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna restate that so that we all, so the, the, the changed motion is that we, approve the appointment of Brenda Rogers for a term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four?
Yes.
And we postpone, and then we're also gonna postpone any decision on the other appointment?
Yes.
Okay, is there any objection to changing the motion, to read that way? And on the commission, sorry, sorry. Okay, so. I, I was trying to do it more streamlined. But, but if anyone objects, then we can do a formal amendment rather than just. Okay, so the, the, the motion has been changed to, this dealing with one of the cease postponing action on the other. Any further discussion? That case, I will call for a vote on the current form of the motion, which stresses this one seat, all in favor? And I can't see Trish, so how?
Hi.
Okay. Okay, opposed, that passes unanimously. And next one is the planning commission. Trish, are you gonna handle that? Um, Trish, I think you need to unmute.
I'm struggling finding the appropriate place on the agenda. I'm sorry. Let me see. Aye, 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 I know.
You want someone else to?
Yeah.
The background is two planning commission seats expired on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, those being Jerry Clay's, Clay's, is that how you said, and, uh, Bob O'Brien. The vacancies were advertised in the local newspaper for two to three weeks and also on social media. Three applicants were received, those being Jerry Claus, Robert O'Brien, and, and Sina, uh, Carey on December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, planning commission meeting. Those, uh, planning commission members who were not applicants interviewed the three candidates and voted four to zero to recommend appointing, uh, Robert O'Brien and Jerry Clay's to the fail than two representatives. Therefore, I move to approve the appointment of Jerry Clay's and Bob O'Brien, O'Brien to the Planning Commission with the terms ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
I will second that, and thank you, Mary.
Second by Trish. Discussion? Looks like not, so I'll call for a vote, all in favor? And.
Aye.
Trish, yeah. Um, it's for some reason Zoom only allows us to have one of you and Jacques on the screen at the same time, so. Um, okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, next is volunteer appointment to the Economic Development Advisory Board.
I, I find a representative for that board. The Economic Development Advisory Board met in an open meeting on December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, reviewed all applicants, submitted and interviewed all qualified applicants for the three, uh, approaching vacancies. The board voted to forward the recommendation of Dave Sakerson, Ashley Colenblock, and Forrest Rogers. Therefore, I move to approve the appointment of Dave Sakerson, Ashley Colenblock, and Forrest Rogers to serve on the economic advisory boards with terms expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and sev- twenty-seven.
Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Clapper, discussion? Looks like not, so I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
And Jacques, did you vote yes?
Yes, aye.
Okay, that's, so that passes unanimously. Okay, that brings us to the end of the, um, board appointments. So next agenda item is assignments of county commission representatives or liaisons to district and county boards, commissions, committees, and other agencies. Um, so we, a year ago, we went through a kind of a more elaborate process with spreadsheets to see who wanted to do what, because we had a lot of new faces. This year, we're all the same people, and we have not gone through that process. So I think the default is things stay the same, but if anyone wants to propose changes, we can do that. And if it's, looks like it's getting too much for this meeting, we can also punt it to the next, next meeting. Mary?
Yes, uh, Trisha Dean and I have spoken, and I would like to take over the homeless, uh, for committee, and she would like to take over the audit committee, budgetal. The audit committee for the county. So we just want to trade positions on that. There's no objection.
So, so I think what we'll do is, at, at some point, we'll just get the list of, of everything and then vote on that. And so is, is someone on staff taking notes about these? Chris, I, I also wanted to, on the materials in the packet, it's still listed me as the representative to the Transportation Special Services, your potential name, Mike. Okay, that's great. Bill?
And then I'd like to take on the Motorized Trails Committee, and I haven't talked to Jacques about it, but I believe he was favorable. Um, I have talked to Mike, who was recommended for that as well. If there's no objections, I'd like to put my name on that one, and then I'd like to get my name on that groundwater sewer, sewer service agency, one of Trish is willing to give that up as well.
Okay, so let's take them one at a time. Um, any objection? Jacques, you have your hand up.
Yeah, and I, and the, the Motorized Trail Committee, uh, assignment is great. I had talked to Cliff Kuntz, who is the chair of that particular committee about, uh, potentially a replacement. And I had, uh, kind of talked to him about Mike, but Mike and I talked about it as well, and, and he knew Bill was interested. So I'm absolutely fine, uh, having Bill take that one over.
Okay. And then the next is the, um, water board representative, which is currently Trish, and Bill expressed interest.
I, I would like to stay on the groundwater and sewer board.
Okay, so we have two commissioners who want to be on that board. Our policy is, is to vote, um, if we want it. Would you like to proceed with the vote? Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with just leaving it as it is. If there's gonna be a battle, it's gonna be a five to two vote, so.
Okay.
I, I would like to mention while we're talking about my boards here also, and that's the UAC board that, um, Mary was voting.
I was gonna say, you'd be the voting member.
I, I'd like to take that voting position. It really is just, uh, stuff that goes on in the, the meetings that you act, any commissioner can vote on the legislative action. It's,
you know, if you, if you attend the meetings, you can vote on, if you're a commissioner, so.
Okay.
Him listed, it's the person who is assigned to be the voting person. That's great, but any of us could join.
Okay, so it sounds like Bill and Mary are amenable to that change. That's been made in part of it, okay? Anything else? Yes, Mike?
I, I don't know, uh, the housing task force, uh, the interlocal housing task force, but I would like to be a part of it. As a person who's looking, as a citizen who's looking to, uh, be more involved with building workforce housing. I would really like to be on more of the boards, pointed to that, be it, be it, not exactly through HOSU, but the interlocal, uh, housing task force, I know works on directly, uh, workforce housing for our area. I don't want to take it, uh, if, if it's only a few of us.
Well, but, um, it, it's an interesting board, because to become a member of that board, you have to attend three meetings.
Okay.
So it's pretty, uh, it's pretty open, it's, uh.
Two commissioners could be on us.
I would think so. I don't see any. And that, if we were both attending it, because it's one that sometimes it's at an odd time, I think it's eleven thirty. It wouldn't be a bad thing if two of us were on it. So could we put two on?
And that's just, just kind of like a brainstorming board? I mean, it's a gathering of the.
Organize the, uh, but they work real closely with the housing authority.
It's a, a communication, information sharing.
Educational. They're the ones that really organize the workshops that they have throughout the year. And, uh, they worked through on the, the report that they, they presented to us.
Well, I have, uh, no problem. If I'm, uh, capable of attending this, then, that's okay.
It's, it'd be great, because it's, uh, it's an interesting board, and, yeah, it'd be great to have two of us.
But are we on our spreadsheet? Do you want to put two names, both of your names there? Okay. Okay. Anything else? Yes, Mike?
This goes for everyone also. I still, uh, even picking up these, a couple others. I'm still very light on boards. I'd be more than willing to dedicate more time. Uh, I don't want to take anything from anyone specifically, but I, I'm able to, my services are pretty open, so.
I have one that I was almost ready to give you, but at the last meeting, they, they kind of get, they said, I, I mentioned that it, you know, the representative could change. I'm not gonna name the board. Say, well, it's good to keep the same person, so they know what's going on. So I think they kind of built me into staying on there. So other than that, I would have.
I don't want to put more workload on, uh, workload on you guys. I, I would just, my schedule's pretty.
Thanks. So I, I guess what I proposed then is that we, I'm sorry, Evan, go ahead.
I don't mean to split hairs, but with the last edit, um, uh, do you know in the bylaws, it's for the housing task force, do they even have bylaws, or is it just informal?
Yeah, they have bylaws. They're gonna review them because, uh, they're, you know, it was a board that was created about seven years ago.
I'm just wondering if, with the two names, if it should say and or or. Because I don't want, like, when this comes up again next year to say, oh, we need two representatives to go there.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe put and or.
Okay.
On it. Good point. And so.
Okay. Anything else before I try to wrap this up? Okay, so what I, what I proposed then is that maybe Alicia can read back all the changes that we've agreed to, and then we just vote on that. And, and then remind folks that if we want to make further changes at the next meeting, that's, that's still okay.
You can change during.
Exactly right this time. Does that sound good? Okay, so. Oster. So just maybe talk about cha-changes relative to what was in the packet.
Yeah, so we've just got, the first change is, and I went in alphabetical order by commissioner, so you know. So there's, uh, Utah Association of Counties that went from Bill and Mary, with Mary voting to just Bill.
What, what was Mary gonna say there, but not as the voting number, or?
It doesn't. I think it was anybody can, it's just, he's the one down on our official.
Okay.
Okay, and then the Motorized Trails Committee went from Jacques to Bill. The transportation, I fixed that from Kevin to Mike. And the housing task force interlocal, I put that from Mary to Mary or Mike. Then the audit committee, instead of Mary, Kevin, and Bill, it's now Trish, Kevin, and Bill. The homeless coordinating committee, instead of Trish, is now Mary.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve assignments as just presented by staff.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Clapper, seconded by Commissioner Winfield, any discussion, further discussion? Okay, if not, I'll call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Trish. Uh, that passes unanimously.
Sure.
Shorter than last year.
It's easier than we.
Chair?
Yes, Stephen.
Before we move on to the next item, I noticed on the agenda, and, and maybe I perhaps just missed it, that we didn't have a, a disclosure of conflict of interest section on the, um, on the agenda. And if we have, and we may want to have one, because I know at least one commissioner has a conflict coming up on the next set of items.
Yeah, that, that happened before you came. Um, I think it is, it was on the agenda somewhere. Yeah, it's, first thing under general reports, and Mike disclosed his conflict on those issues. But, but thanks for checking.
Thank you. Sorry, I missed that. I, I appreciate it.
Okay, so now we are to, um, agenda item number four, um, alternative dwelling overlay rezone at fourteen forty-one Spanish Valley Drive, parcel two eight eighty-nine. And we have Jenna from, uh, Jenna Goring from the planning.
This item is, uh, ADO located at fourteen forty-one Spanish Valley Drive. Um, it is Kevin O'Neill, and the master plan here proposes an addition of four RV dwelling sites measuring between nine hundred and eleven hundred and twenty-five square feet, full sewer water electrical hookups. Uh, the dwelling sites are arranged at the rear of the property along with a circular internal driveway that's compliant with the emergency, excuse me, emergency vehicle turnaround requirements. Each dwelling site has the required associated parking space and. emergency vehicle turnaround requirements. Each dwelling site has the required associated parking space and will be improved with the required surface treatment. The one point oh three acre subject property is located at fourteen forty-one Spanish Valley Drive, excuse me. It is within a large lot residential zoning district, which is a preferred zoning district for the ADO projects and is the location as well of the applicant's principal dwelling. The density proposed is largely compatible with other uses in the area as the concrete subdivision to the north includes parcels ranging in size from point two oh acres to point four, point five acres. Additionally, the valley terraces subdivision across the street has half acre lots as well. Where consideration in this applicant is that if the applicant were to subdivide the property in accordance with the existing L L R zoning district, which allows half acre lots and was to build a principal dwelling unit and ADO on each lot, such compliant development would only have one less dwelling unit than is what, than is what proposed for this application. The proposal has a preferred location on a major collector per the unified transportation master plan and being located on the Spanish Valley Drive will have access to the future shared use path, which would provide multi-modal access for residents. While some additional traffic could be anticipated with four additional units, as mentioned, the application pro- application proposes only one additional dwelling that will be allowed by right. While the planning process is out ongoing, public workshops and land use steering committee meetings focused on the future land use map have consistently identified Mill Creek Drive and Spanish Valley Drive intersection as an emerging node for consideration of mixed neighborhood commercial and increased residential density. The proposed ADO is in compliance with all ADO requirements regarding site sizing, parking setbacks, driveways, and et cetera. Prior to moving forward with development, all ADO applicants are required to submit and obtain approval of a site plan application through planning and zoning. With site plan approval, an applicant may then move forward with building, electrical, or any development permits as needed. Consideration, um, of the applicant was seen as a best fit during the intent to apply application period for, from commission. Um, and additionally, in a public hearing on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, the Grand County Planning Commission had voted five to zero with two absent to send a favorable recommendation based on the application meeting the criteria of compatibility with the existing community characteristics and overall design of the development. Two public comments, um, Mr. Joe Dowd and Joe Dowd Junior provided were against the application and each of those uh, individuals of property nearby.
Okay, thanks Jenna, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've already voted in favor of the intent to apply for this project and we've been through the public hearing for it, so this is the last stop before the commission. Um, it looks like the, the recommended motion in the packet is kind of complicated and calls for some improvisation by a commissioner. You know, we don't want to read the whole thing verbatim. Um, does anyone want to take a crack at making some findings and then reading the final couple of paragraphs of the recommended motion? Evan?
Uh, I, before that, uh, Jenna, were there any changes to um, this application since we saw the intent to apply?
No, only very small set that I was, um, I think it was their little certification on the emergency access turnaround, which is.
Any, any discussion or does anyone want to make a motion? Thank you.
Okay, I move to approve the alternate dwelling overlay for Grand County parcel number zero two dash zero 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 eight dash zero zero eight nine with the following findings. And, uh, and, and associated master planning and development agreement with the following conditions. Development is limited to, uh, four ADO sites as designed on the approved master plan dated eleven three, twenty twenty-three. The owner shall record the development agreement in the real property records of Grand County simultaneously with the approval of approved ordinance and prior to application for further site plans, constructions or development. The finding is that the ADO development are in the preferred, in the following zoning district. And, uh, that they are compatible with existing, uh, community characteristics, existing des- density or future land use des- density. And his historical use of the subject property includes a historical use of alternative dwellings.
Thank you, Mary. Is there a second? Uh, second by Commissioner Clapper, discussion. Yeah, also, I, I think this one is pretty consistent with other ADO developments that we approved, so I can to vote for it. Okay, so since no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And all opposed?
I'm opposed, Kevin.
Okay, I see you, Trish. You, you're back with the.
You're next to each other now.
Okay, that's passed, uh, five to one with, uh, Commissioner McCurdy recusing himself and Commissioner Haddina opposed. Okay, on to the next one. I think that's also you, Jenna.
This is also another ADO application. This application is located at thirteen seventy-nine South Arnel Lane. And this ADO is proposing eight alternative dwelling sites with full sewer water electrical hookup situated along a preferred circular internal drive access. One point two six acre property is owned rural residential is currently the location of the applicant's primary dwelling, fronts on South Arnel Lane, South Apollium. Property is bound on the west by several other, several other properties also is owned by rural residential. But this property is in a unique location in that it sits in a small pocket zone for one acre lots while being surrounded on three sides by property zone highway commercial. A high level look at the vicinity map highlights this unique zoning and could support the idea that this pocket of low density residential could be viewed as a good location for increased residential density. As designed, the development adheres to the required RR setbacks. Each dwelling site is proposed to be a minimum of six hundred square feet and would be located on a preferred circular drive access. As encouraged for land use code section four point nine point five E one, additional open space on the property is included and divide, define a shared green space and community garden and shared lawn. The land use code permits a twenty-five percent maximum lot coverage in the rural residential zoning district. And coverage on the lots, including the existing home and proposed dwelling sites constitute roughly nineteen percent while under the allowance for the district. Because the development is immediately bordered on by other property zone rural residential, a protected zone district as defined by the land use code, screening will be required in accordance and such, such screening has been included on the master plan and identified as a six foot fence to be situated on the north, south, and east property lines. Plans also include a native tree or bush for each proposed dwelling site and additional parking space for each dwelling beyond the singular space required. While not located on the future shared path, uh, along Spanish Valley Drive, the intersection of Spanish Valley Drive and Mill Creek Drive is where the multimodal path will begin and is roughly twelve hundred feet away. Overall, the location of the development provides quick access to Highway one ninety-one as well as the city center via Mill Creek Drive. Access to the subject lot consists of an easement defined in the title. And while eight additional dwelling units accessing the property via easement is not ideal, applicant has agreed that if the rezon were to be approved, they would enter into a development access affidavit agreement with adjacent property owners that would address the long-term maintenance of such easement over time as related to surface treatment, dust mitigation, and its associated costs. In addition, the applicant has agreed to submit a county attorney approved development agreement that clarifies the access to the subject lot as related to location and required with the easement and to references the development access affidavit agreement between the applicant and adjacent property owners. Due to timing constraints of the ADO application process, while drafted, the details of those above agreements would be finalized if the rezon were to be approved. The applicant has submitted, uh, an affidavit signed by the affected property owners that aims to provide assurance to the commission that those property owners with the rights to the easements are informed of the scope of the ADO, including the density it would add to the lot and also describes that if approved, the applicant has a plan for maintenance of such access easement. It may be worth noting that the applicant may not begin the site plan review application process until the proposed development access affidavit agreement, master plan, and that development agreement are reported. Also worth noting, the ADO ordinance allows for six months from the time of district approval to obtain site plan review approval from the planning department. The delay in analyzing the development and maintenance agreements may precipitate the need for an extension request and amended development agreement in accordance with land use code four forty-nine point six G lapse of approval. Ultimately, prior to moving forward with development, all applicants are required to get that site. Like the other application, during the intent to apply period, this application was seen as a best, best fit by ADO criteria and as well during a public hearing on November thirteenth, the planning commission voted four to zero with two absent and one recusal to send a favorable recommendation to the commission based on the application, application meeting the following criteria of compatibility with existing community characteristics. And this application did not have any public comments received during that period.
Good, thank you. So again, we're, we're looking for a, a motion that includes some findings.
I, I move to approve the, uh, alternate dwelling overlay rezon on thirteen seventy-nine South Arnel Ro, uh, Lane. The development is limited to eight ADO sites. And the property owner shows to admit to a county attorney approval de- uh, development access fill a affidavit agreement signed by all the applicants and all adjacent property owners. Think I need to do that. The findings is, uh, is compatible with existing community characteristics, existing density, or future land use designation. And the relative impact on water resources is comparable to a large lot, single family dwelling, uh, development as as data is available. Overall design of the proposed development includes site design, landscaping, active open space, provide any amenities included such as storage space or other communal spaces.
Um, I think so. So I, I interpreted that, that you meant to include the things numbered one, two, and three in the packet as conditions on approval.
Yes.
Okay, so make sure the minutes reflect.
I, I didn't read them all. I just read the first part.
Okay.
But conditioned on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we have second by Commissioner Winfield. Any discussion? We don't normally let members of the audience speak, Mike. You should, you have all your voice. Okay, um, I, I, I'll just say, I, I think this is pretty similar to a lot of other ADOs that we approved. Approved, um, I plan on voting for it. I, I think it's consistent with our, our policy with, for approving these, you know, smaller ADO developments. Um, so if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and all opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, so that passes five to one with Commissioner Haddin in opposition and Commissioner McCurdy recusing himself. Okay, it's, it's you again. Yeah, I think it's the, the encrata O A O application. Is that you or?
This item is an ordinance approving the overnight accommodation overlay of RV campground parcel number twenty-four dash O X S T dash zero zero six seven located on the highway three thirteen. Going to share vicinity map while I read through this, you can get an idea of where that's located. Public property is located in raging grazing and is currently undeveloped and surrounded by B L M land, which is predominantly used for recreation. Natural wildlife habitat and resource extraction. This request for an O A O RV campground to be applied to the portion of the parcel for the purpose of developing a luxury eco retreat centered on environmentally responsible tourism. The O A O proposal includes a request to rezone five hundred and forty-four acres of the roughly one thousand one hundred and thirty acre parcel. The property owner, uh, Intrepid Potash Moab LLC intends to later subdivide the parcel, partitioning off the five hundred and forty-four acres, which is the subject of this rezone request. And as such, the full property area is not included in this request. The O A O development includes plans for sixteen luxury tent sites, activity center, restaurant, barn, swimming pool, as well as five onsite employee housing units as permitted for the land use code accessory housing, excuse me, accessory employee housing. The developer estimates that the resort will generate up to fifty jobs with a much higher pay rate than presented present day average wage in Grand County. This application is a research. In twenty twenty-two, the developer brought forth a similar proposal that was denied at that time. Commission stating concerns with the relative, relatively high ratio of overnight accommodations as compared to primary dwellings in the county. And the development agreement lacking a sufficient provision to ensure deed restricted employee housing that would offset the development's impact. Commission also cited concerns with the development's impact on the view shed and surrounding area being located within the boundary of the scenic resource protection district. At that time, the developer had plans for implementing a conservation easement for a large portion of property, but the development agreement did not include any mechanism for ensuring the conservation easement would be executed and that the open space would be preserved in perpetuity. The developers resubmitted the application with a revised development agreement, which includes provisions for on and offsite employee housing as well as a deed restricted open space to be preserved in perpetuity. The employee housing proposal brought forth by the developer includes a commitment to construct twenty offsite employee housing units located in Grand County and to be deed restricted for employee house, employed household, excuse me, actively employed households per land use code four point seven. The applicant had originally proposed fifteen employee housing sites. However, in response to feedback received during the planning commission public hearing, related to the development's effect on local housing, the applicant chose to include five additional offsite employee housing units to be considered with the application. This proposal is in addition to the commitment to construct five onsite employee housing units as permitted for the land use code. Both on and offsite employee housing is required to be constructed within twenty-four months of the site plan approval and prior to certi- certificate of occupancy for the tent units, uh, is issued for the, is issued for the resort. Additionally, the applicant has entered into a deed restriction agreement with the neighboring property Red Earth Venue for the purpose of open space preservation of one hundred and thirty-six acres of land surrounding the venue, including a portion of the three thirteen scenic highway. Because the property owner's intent is to later subdivide that portion of property, which is the subject of the O A O request, the deed restriction area does not include the remainder of the property. The development agreement requires that such proposal for dedicated open space of perpetuity be finalized and reported prior to obtaining final site plan approval. The developer intends to further protect the natural landscape within a deed restricted area through a conservation easement. The applicant has included a letter provided by Utah Open Lands Conservation Association, which explains that while the association cannot provide a guarantee of conservation easement until the property owner requests the initiation of the review, the association does in fact recognize this location as a priority conservation region. Permit, conditional use permit, building permit, certificate of occup- occupancy, or discretionary approval. Overall, the applicant has demonstrated that the project largely complies with the O A O standards, designing an energy efficient luxury eco retreat with no more than sixteen tent sites. Development of camping accommodations will be built within a modest footprint as relative to the five hundred and forty-four acre property. The applicant will need to provide evidence of the water rights sufficient to support the development as well as a preliminary engineering study showing the feasibility of providing the water source and the ability to dispose of wastewater on site. Regarding the site improvements, the Grand County engineers reviewed the plan concept and forwarded the following comments. The applicant will be required to provide public water source. The applicant will be required to provide public water source as approved by D W Q and D E Q at site plan review. Wastewater will be treated using an Arendco onsite treatment unit and drain field. Preliminary engineer studies will be required to assess the feasibility of a public water source and the ability to dispose of wastewater on site. At site plan review, an access permit for UDOT would be required for access off state route three thirteen. Also, at site plan review, a drainage study would be required specifically to address the crossing of Seven Mile Wash and it's a major drainage channel. Seven Mile Wash drains a large area and will become impassable for several hours following occurrence of a rain event in the upland area. There appears to be an alternate route to reach highway one ninety-one across a portion of the property that is not slated for development. An emergency access easement can likely be arranged. The accurate crossing of the wash may need to be improved to permit reliable vehicular travel in the twelve to twenty-four hours after a rain event. Additionally, a rainfall hazard study will be evaluated if the project moves forward due to the site being adjacent to the steep slopes and cliffs, but the hazard is not incredibly high given the moderate steepness of the north wall of the canyon and the lack of much source material. In regards to the consideration for approval denial or postponement, ALISA did provide an evaluation of the overnight accommodation ratio over the past few years from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-three. And you would see there that that ratio when the moratorium that was originally put into place was one point four. And that did jump up, jump up a little bit in two thousand and twenty-one due to developments that were in the pipeline to be developed. That went up to one point seven, but since then in two thousand and twenty-three, that did go down a point one point six. So we are still over that ratio that originally initiate an eco-friendly retreat within more than sixteen sites. Development of a camping accommodations would be built within a modest footprint and all hazard studies and engineering review would happen at site plan. So there's also a providing, we also, excuse me, did provide the evaluation of planning commission's discussion at the public hearing on October ninth. Um, and they voted in favor for, excuse me, four in favor, one abstention, and one no. To forward a recommendation to county commission to table the application for a period not to exceed nine months for the period, for the purpose of allowing staff to update the land use code section four point six to define the landing use and incorporate and determine how that you should have assured housing included in that. And then the recommendation also included that if county commission would not like to table the application, they would forward a favorable application or favorable recommendation based on the considerations of interest, including diversification of economics, increased wages, community aesthetic, civic and open space, and a housing demand. Planning commission also discussed in depth the comparison of the intensity of this development as compared to that would be permitted as a use by right. This development with sixteen units appears to be a less intense use of the property. The county planning commission also discussed that during the applicant's previous submission, the county had laid out items that would like to see in the application, and now that the application has been resubmitted with those elements included, it is important to give that thorough consideration. And then I'd also like to note that our department did speak with the applicants, and if you'll notice on the actual master plan.
Um, Jen, I don't think, okay.
There is a conservation easement note that would need to be updated a bit. It lists here that within the conservation easement area, which is the hatched area, I'll show you on the left, that it would include the employee zone and luxury tents and amenities. That actually isn't the case. So the area that would be deed restricted would not include the employee area, would not include the luxury tents or amenities. So it would be updated to say that this in fact would be a deed restricted area and would be reserved for those areas, excuse me, those elements that are not part of the development. Um, let's see. So during the public comment period, nine comments were received, five in support of the project and four against. Uh, two comments that were in support were actually included in the application commission packet because they just weren't received in time, but they are emailed directly to you and they were received within the comment period, so you should have had those as well. And then one additional uh, comment in support was received today outside of that public comment period as well. That was in support. So getting into a discussion, I imagine, about some issues or questions that came up during last meeting during the public hearing, we walked away with a couple of questions. And we were able to get a couple attorney opinions on those questions. And so to brief the three and then I'm sure we'll get into a discussion about them. The first question was that if the OAO were to be approved, being it's an overlay, could the property allow additional development based on the allowance of the underlying zone district? So being an overlay, it provides additional allowance to the property, but could you additionally develop what the underlying zone district allows on top of this? Second question being essentially is the applicant and commission allowed to negotiate some terms of the development agreement during this period? Or would it have to be a resubmission of the application? And the third question being is whether an applicant could provide additional onsite housing units for their employees beyond what the land use code permits per section three accessory housing units, accessory housing. Stephen, I don't know if you may like to kind of address how your office provided a synopsis of the response to these three questions?
Sure, hap- happy to weigh in and and from our, from my position now, we provided a memo, the memo went out to, I believe, Kevin, Mary, and Jacques received a copy of it. Um, because of the sensitive nature on some of these questions and the information that the commissioners may want to explore and because of the possible responses and the ultimate decision on the parcel, we would encourage the commission to postpone the issue for two weeks. The individual commissioners can reach out. Here's why. A commissioner may, for example, ask if we could get something more, let's say hypothetical. Uh, that the commission may say, well, we want them to do A, B, C, and D, right? And only if they do those things, we're going to approve it. Well, a lot of that can become what's considered a quid pro quo, where if this applicant gave those things, then they'd get different treatment than somebody else if that individual didn't have those things. And so we have to be very careful on how we approach those things and how we answer those questions. Um, the draft memo was sent out. I can send to the additional additional commissioners, but I would encourage the commission to take two additional weeks. I can meet with you guys this week during a virtual meeting or a phone call. I'm happy to do that. Uh, we had a quick meeting on Friday. Um, Ms. Hoffren from my office, as well as Commissioner Vice Chair Walker, Ms. Gorney and Ms. Martin were able to attend, and I was able to get a memo, a very, very skeleton draft of a memo. So I'd like additional time. I'd like those commissioners that have more questions to reach out and us to address it then, as opposed to going through some of the questions that I think based on the possible outcome um, could likely subject ourselves to more scrutiny or litigation.
So Stephen, could you say more about, I think you used the term quid, quid pro quo?
Yeah.
I, I mean, just what I, I don't recall. I've never, you know, I've heard rumors of that being a problem, but I've never seen it in black and white. Could you say more?
Yeah, so the idea of quid pro quo is where an individual applicant comes forward to us and says, hey, we really want to build a water park in Moab, okay? And if you look at the land use code, maybe a water park would need certain elements. And let's say they had those certain elements to adjust, but maybe the commission wanted a little bit more. And if it wasn't written that it was a requirement by our land use code, we can't require more things to allow them to seek that item. So last year, and that was, um, that's kind of a concern that if you have an applicant that when you look facially at everything that the presenting, they have all that's needed to qualify for that. But then if we're asking them for a little bit more or above and beyond to to allow them to receive that, right? That's the quid pro quo. That's what we want to avoid because then another applicant comes forward and says, you know, we have a parcel of land. Let's imagine the neighbor across the highway had an identical sized parcel of land and said, oh, look, you, you allowed my neighbor to do it because they had more land to give a conservation easement, which isn't required by law, which isn't required by your land use code to, to have a land or to have a conservation easement, but they gave that. And that was the reason why you approved your application instead of looking at the factors. It's like if I go to buy a candy bar, it's, well, it used to be a dollar. Let's imagine it's a dollar. If I hand you a dollar and I say, hey, I want to buy the candy bar, and they say, yeah, it's a dollar. They might look at me and go, hmm, I don't really want to say, sell you a candy bar for a dollar. If I slip another dollar to them, that's that quid pro quo. That's where I normally should have been able to have that candy bar, but for whatever reason, they didn't want to permit that. And I know that this is slightly different than that, the candy bar example, because they're asking for this overlay and the change, but that's kind of watered down exceptionally to to kind of convey the point.
And the fact that this is you next, um, the fact that this is a legislative rather than administrative decision doesn't change that?
It's, that's, that's what's, that's the concern, right? That's always the concern that somebody theoretically could, could try to argue that the commission did something improper to approve the development. That's, that's what we're trying, we, we never want there to be that perception that somebody got different treatment than somebody else for other purposes. But for them giving up A, B, and Z, we don't think they would have been approved.
And then last question, then I'll go on the bill. Um, and where would, is this case law? Is this lewd mouth? Where, you know, these things you've been saying, what's, what's the basis?
So the land use code is what drives what we need to see in an individual application. What are the factors that we're looking at? And then case law and quid pro quo, we don't want there to be that perception that we're going outside of what the land use code is um, for us to approve something else. So we don't want to look, uh, we don't want somebody thinking that we've looked beyond the application at an area that isn't required and only because of other additional elements we've accepted their accepted their application.
Okay, that didn't exactly answer, but I'll let Phil take a turn, return.
I guess I'm looking for some clarification, Stephen. You're saying that you want to table this until the next meeting? Is that my understanding?
Postpone, yeah.
Yeah, just postpone it.
Postpone it for the nine months that's being recommended by the planning commission.
No, I, I think we should give a, give a response to the applicant. Um, we, when an applicant applies, we give them the laws that are in place at the time. We can't change, you know, the goal normally is that they're entering in with the rules frozen at that date. We can't change the rules on them. Now, having their application sit for nine months, I don't think that's fair to the actual individual applicant. I'm saying two weeks. And in the meantime, commissioners, we can set up a time to talk with myself, Ms. Gorney, Ms. Martin, and flush out some of these questions and kind of explore the limits by which the county can seek things and not seek things. And this is for people that are both interested in seeing, well, I shouldn't say interested, both for commissioners that are um, receptive to what the applicant's proposing and those that are not receptive to what the applicant's proposing. Because that way we can kind of fully flesh out what it is, um, what is the commissioners would like to see and what our limitations are. And the reason why we, why we would be best served doing that in a private capacity is there are certain limitations on what we can ask for. And we don't want to appear to be denying an application merely because we can't get everything that we want. Does that make sense? Kind of.
Yeah, so you're, you're recommending postponing until the next commission meeting?
Correct. And then I'm encouraging commissioners to reach out to me today um, or tomorrow, set up times and we can meet and you guys can bring all your questions and we can run through all the questions, all the hypotheticals and scenarios so that we can um, see what is exactly the possible outcomes that we have and and how we can enforce. And I know there's been a lot of questions regarding this particular topic. And I think commissioners can come with their questions because I know people have said, well, what about enforced building? What is this conservation easement? How do we ensure that it happens or not? Or is there a requirement and all those things? And I can answer some of those questions too in a, uh, just a private setting. And we can do it groups of three or two or however the commissioners, but we can't do four. Now, if there was, I mean, the only other, the only other caveat I could say is if there was a strong desire by the majority not to approve the application to begin with, then I, I mean, that's the other scenario that we wouldn't even have to go through any more discussion. I'm not encouraging that. I'm just uh, kind of explaining if there, if there are people saying, yeah, I like this idea, but I want to know about A, B, C, D through Z. That's one thing, but if it's just, I don't want to see this go forward, um, then, then I don't know that we need to have more, more conversations. So just giving all the options. I'm not saying that you should just postpone it because if the majority said we don't want this, uh, then there's no reason to set up eighteen meetings with me and do it that way. But if there's interest in doing it, then I think commissioners seem to have had questions and I know Commissioner Vice Chair Walker has. Um, and I don't know if others, I know others at the meeting did have some questions and I don't know that those have been fully stated.
I guess I would be in favor of having at least some discussion now. I mean, we've, you know, it's been several meetings and this also came before two years and, and I think, you know, we can try to avoid the sort of narrow technical things that Stephen thinks might be problematic, but, you know, we should at least figure out, like, you know, maybe, maybe a majority of us would, wouldn't vote for this under any circumstances and it'd be quick. So, and I think there's been a fair amount of interest in this as, as well, so.
Kevin, can I go ahead and?
Sure.
And I, and I've already kind of gone through this, but, um, I'm not interested. And it, it really comes to, and I kind of conveyed this to the applicant last time, you know, we get a lot of feedback from the lodging community that their occupant, occupancy rates are not high enough. We get it all the time. And now we have another lodging entity coming forward. And so to me, it just exacerbates the issue that we're already faced with, that we don't have enough occupancy. And so that's kind of the big one for me overriding. I guess the other things are water. I will state again that there is really no water um, on that side of one ninety-one. And so I'm concerned again for the applicants that they're going to drill and drill and drill and drill and not find any water. So this idea that it's going to be broken up into five acre lots, I don't worry about that because there's no way an individual entity is going to be able to afford a thousand foot well. I'll just state that. Um, and, and so if they can't find water, they're going to be hauling water and the reality is like the first, you know, if you're a water service provider, the first thing you're going to cut off is, is loadouts. And the other thing is the flooding issues on, on Seven Mile and the, the statement that they might be cut off for a few hours is, is pretty ludicrous. I mean, it's, it's a major wash. It's a major drainage and, and when that thing rolls, it's, it's going to be more than a few hours. Um, that is bighorn sheep habitat. I've been in there when, and there's sheep in there. And so, you know, that's an extremely sensitive species. They are not going to hang around a development. I do appreciate it, that it is kind of tucked back in there. And so visually, I don't think we're going to really have to see that and I appreciate that. Um, but, you know, again, it's, you know, the sheep aren't going to, are going to stick around, around there. I do again appreciate that they're willing and open to preserve some open space and provide employee housing. But again, we're not at that ratio that we're seeking. And again, this will just exacerbate that. So I'm, you know, I'm not going to vote for it. But that's just me. And I'm done.
Go ahead, Mike.
I'm very interested in this project proceeding. I would be entirely in favor for it. I do have the concerns of water. Still in a desert, need water. It's not easy to find, especially out there, but that's on you. Them, not me. Uh, the benefits of employee housing, uh, very targeted tourism marketing. Uh, it, it seems to go hand in hand with what the county's been wanting for years. Uh, at the very targeted, uh, marketing and bringing very targeted tourists to our area. Um, fifteen to sixteen units, the far is not a sprawling uh, development. Thank you for the employee housing uh, and the offsite employee housing, uh, and the promise of higher wages and a hundred and fifty acre con- conservation easement along with uh, there's few and far between projects being put forth that there's few and far between projects being put forth uh that offer up so much of this. For that, I'm in favor of it.
Thanks, Mike. Um, yeah, I, let's see. I I quite a few things to say about this. I might have to break it into two pieces. Yeah, I I I've heard a lot of this, um, you know, we've gotten some emails in favor. But, you know, the the message I hear over and over again from constituents is, you know, we've got too many overnight accommodations. We don't need more. And that was the message we got back in twenty nineteen and we changed the land use code so that overnight accommodations are no longer used by right and any approval had to come through the commission commission in a situation where we could, you know, legally easily say no. Since twenty nineteen, I think we've approved two OA developments, both relatively small, both um, far from MOLAB. Um, so this will be number three if it were approved. Um, I, I think the the um, discussion back in twenty nineteen was not to stop development, you know. You know, it was to put on the brakes pretty strongly, but not, you know, all the way. And um, and I think, you know, I, in fact, I remember Evan, I think stated it, I should have gotten the clip, but you know, if some something unusual or exceptional comes along, we wanted the flexibility to approve it. And I, to me, I I think this probably does um fit that, at those criteria. It's it's relatively small in terms of number of rooms. I don't think it's going to make a big difference. And I and I think if you just look overall at the pace at which we're approving overnight accommodations since twenty nineteen, it's it's not zero, but it's not way, way above zero either. So, um, I, so I I don't think we're going to drive occupancy, take grids down in particular. Um. I, I, I think also it 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 has diversification with within our tourism sector. Um, this is a kind of unusual high end result. Um, I think a lot of I mean, I I struggle with a little bit because I I think glamping is very silly. I mean, I mean, in the world, but you know, pay thousands of dollars to sleep in a tent. It's silly. It shouldn't exist. Um, but it does exist. It seems to be popular. It seems that there are people who want to do it. And I think it's lower impact than than a lot of traditional forms. So I think if there's going to be glamping, you know, maybe we should get some too. And and I think it it benefits us, I think, both in terms of the dollar per tourist ratio, but also the the diversity of employment opportunities, you know, similar to what maybe Red Cross lost us. Um. And and I think, um, and then I think a big thing for me, part the biggest issue is, um, you know, what what would happen on this parcel if we turned it down? And it's its own ranging grazing and that includes some um uses by right that we couldn't really stop, you know, the main one being, you know, five acre lots. And there's a question of how much water there is, but um, you know, there are some, there is at least one landowner not far away who has a big spring and you know, things can be piped. I I wouldn't want to bet, you know, the next thirty years, no one figures out how to make housing work there. Um. So for that reason, the the fact that they're guaranteeing quite a bit of open space and limiting the total amount of development. To me, that makes it seem attractive, even though I think glamping is silly. Like a lot of writers. Um. So, yeah, so I I think I I lean toward voting for it, but I I think there are some technical issues to iron out and it's not really the the applicant's fault. I think the applicant has been trying hard to to offer the county a deal that we want to take and then staff. And, you know, both the planning staff and the attorney's office and not necessarily you, Stephen, but also, you know, the previous county attorney, um, you know, they throw up all these roadblocks. And I I found the whole thing kind of, you know, vicariously frustrating. Um, you know, looking at it from the applicant's point of view. And I'm I'm hoping that we can get this nailed down in a way that we would like like without having to go back to square zero. I I then so I, one of the things I would like to talk with Stephen about in the next two weeks is just the extent to which these applications could be modded, amended, you know, consistent with the original intent, you know, after they're submitted. We we saw, you know, Jenna highlighted one at the very beginning of her presentation. You know, there was some mistake in the way the easement was worded, so that's going to change. So so clearly these things can change. Um, and I I think changes that are consistent with the intent intent, but maybe do a better job of guaranteeing it. I would hope that we could get those changes hammered out and not have to like deny it and then start over again and going through the planning commission, all that stuff. So that's um some, getting some clarity on those issues is something I'd like to do over the next couple of weeks. Okay, and I, Bill, did you also have your hand?
Um, I would like to, but go ahead, let Jaco.
Okay. Okay, Jaco, take it away.
Thank you. Yeah, I I I I'm definitely conflicted about this one and and some of Trish, Trish makes some very good points, but I do. We, this came, when this came up before, I think we, it was a four-three split vote with the with a different commission and um, we did uh indicate to the applicant that that were they to come back with a few changes that we'd be interested in in looking at it. And I'm 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 still interested in this, I think for for a lot of the reasons that Kevin spoke of. Um, especially, I think, I think the impact to benefit ratio is something that it that I'd I'd consider for sure, especially, I mean, I like Kevin, I think spending two thousand dollars a night to sleep in a tent is is mind blowing, but if people are willing to do it, then it is um it's something that would uh for for light impact and just a few more overnight accommodations would would have a large increase on on our bottom line as far as bringing in TRT and and other taxes. That's that's something to consider. And uh, so, yeah, I guess I'm saying that I I I would very much like to uh consider pushing this forward. But I I would, like Kevin, I would like to address some of the um some of the concerns and and potential uh changes that could be made. Thank you.
Yeah, I I'd like to speak to it also. I believe that really this is some of the type of tourism, the main type of tourism that we'd like to see here. I mean, we're we're trying to bring in a higher level and a higher quality of people. Um, I I don't know if silly is the word I'd use on glamping. I would say that um, it's just out of my reach. And if I could afford it, I might think it'd be a great way to go. But the fact that they come here and they're not high impact users, they're not trailer in their ATVs, which is something that a a lot of people are not happy about here. I see a real positive to it and the right by use thing, that there could be a lot more there than, is it fifteen units, I believe we're talking about? No, I'm, I mean that there are both six sixteen. So we're talking about sixteen campsites that has a opportunity of a tremendous amount of TRT taxes and benefits in other ways as well to our community. So I I think it's a good way to go. And I know that we're talking about hotel occupancy rates and whatnot and with the state of Utah, the KMC Gardeners said that um, we're up over the sixty-four point three percent for twenty twenty-two in the state of Utah to um sixty-five point eight overall in state of Utah. Not counting Grand County, which is seeing it down. So I I think to push fifteen of these down the road because we're worried about occupancy is not a good good way to look at that. And although there are hurdles that this developer is going to have to get across, water being one of them and that drainage, the other one, those are his hurdles. They're not ours. His the the way that he comes up and finds water, whether it be through wells or he has to haul water in there, those are his hurdles. That that's for his customers and if he does a poor job of that, why it's going to reflect on his business. It's not, it isn't our business to determine whether or not he's got the ability to get rainwater or well water or haul water. So I I'm in favor of moving this forward if we think that we need a couple of weeks to postpone it, to vote on it next time. I'd be okay with that. But I'm, I'm also okay with making a motion today to approve and move it on if that that was what the majority wanted to do.
I'd like this project from the very beginning. And I'm a little frustrated that it's the if I don't want to go against our lawyer, so I'd probably not vote on it today, but if I, but if it wasn't for that, I I would vote yesterday without hesitation. I think uh when we put in the this ordinance, uh, myself and uh the uh attorney at the time and the head of the planning department at the time met with Stuart Adams, the Senate, State Senate, uh, president. And it was very clear. I mean, we gave our word, the people that were in that, that this was not going to bring a a complete stop to overnight rentals, because they were really the senator, the senate was pretty upset about our our uh, when we put the moratorium on and this was our agreement that we made that we wouldn't put a total stop on approving overnight rentals. So I think to keep our word that we gave then, it's important that we every once in a while approve overnight rentals. And this one, I think, offers many more benefits than drawbacks. The small impact uh is is pretty amazing. The fact that they're going to uh build all this affordable housing, which not to that's huge help to our community. It's something, we say we're in a crisis, and somebody, somebody stepping forward to help us with that. And the fact that they're willing to make a conservation area really excites me. I think that's you know, so I was one of the people that voted for it before and I my mind has not changed. I'm just probably with the applicant a little frustrated that it seems to be one hurdle after another.
Okay, so I think, was it Trish? Trish, you had your hand up, now it's down. Did you change your mind?
I was just going to tell Bill that I have a couple wall tents and wood stoves and you can borrow them anytime.
Roll me. Okay, so next in line is Stephen.
So we do have, the the development agreement is is drafted. It is theoretically ready to go. It's been reviewed. It's in the packet. It has the information there. Um, the area where I think we might not be ready is my, my job as the attorney is to make sure all of my clients, the commissioners, have all the information that they need before them to make a decision. Um, where we're at today is there are some commissioners that have questions. They want to explore more options. It's not that we're ready to not, not, not ready to approve it. It's that there are commissioners that um, they have questions and I want them to have that right to ask those questions, but they can't do it. I'm encouraging them not to do it in a public setting because of uh the possible headaches that it can cause. So the development agreement is there. It is legally sound. It's ready to be approved, but I don't want any clients theoretically to just vote on it without feeling fully ready to commit to it. And if they have outstanding questions, that's what I'm encouraging. Um, but I I do have time, like I said, for, it looks like Kevin and Jaco would like to to meet at least. If there are others that want to talk. Uh, if the commission approved it or denied it today, I I don't have a dog in a fight. It it can go either way, but I don't want it to feel like it's not possible to approve it today. It is possible to approve it today. But you have some commissioners that would like to know more information. So that's, that's kind of where we're at.
Anyone else? Um, I I think I would be in favor of postponing for two weeks, just to I I think this is kind of a big deal and there's a lot of public interest and I just want to make sure we, you know, do things as as good as we can in terms of securing future open space and things like that.
Second.
So I will interpret that as a motion from Commissioner Clapper to postpone for two weeks.
I'll second that. Hesitantly, I would really, yeah, hesitantly.
Okay, hesitant second by Commissioner McGee.
I think if people have questions two weeks, big skin things is wrong.
Okay, so any further discussion before we stop this for this meeting?
I think just for the sake of the applicant, it sounds like there's uh general support from the majority, so.
We get three, yes.
It's a matter of of dialing in some of the technical bits and getting the answers to the questions that came up in the hearing that we didn't get tonight, so.
I I guess I'd like to see those memos as well that Stephen talked about. We could all get forwarded that information.
Stephen, did you catch that?
I did. And and any commissioners, I've got uh Commissioner um Chair Hadler and Vice Chair Walker. Are there any other commissioners that would like me to um circle them up to sit down and schedule a time to chat about this more in depth or not? Either way is perfectly fine.
I think for me, starting with the memo, that might answer some of the questions. And then, um, if there's more from that, I'll reach out.
I would like to join Hadler and uh Walker if the time works for me. Just because I would like to hear what the answers are and their questions are because, but uh if I can't meet when they meet, I'm comfortable voting on it.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on the motion to postpone this till the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think the, any opposed? So that was unanimous. Thanks, everyone. I I think you should. I I think public comment's great. If people comment between now and the next meeting, we should have, I I think we should have in the back.
Okay, great. That's been our practice.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item is the consent agenda. Um, on the consent agenda this week is the approval of meeting minutes. Um, that was item A, item B, ratification of payment of bills and
Do you have it?
Um, I can get to it in a second. It's good.
Probably right here.
Are you looking for the amounts?
Yeah.
Uh, total bills is one million, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. Total payroll is three hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighteen cents for total bills and payroll of one thousand five, one million, five hundred seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-seven cents.
Okay, thanks. Um, in item C, we have purchase of election equipment. And a clerk's office. Um, item D, fiscal year twenty-four, WRI grant number sixty-five eighteen, cooperative agreement between Utah Department of Natural Resources WR and Grand County, Grand County Police Department. Item E is an innovation grant award agreement. Item F is accepting invitation to serve as a consulting party for the National Historic Preservation Act, Section one oh six review process for the Dolores River River Travel Management Plan.
Motion to accept as read.
Good. Um, I also thank, thank you for that motion. And I just wanted to also note that we don't, the minutes, we don't have the fifth and the nineteenth, so. Okay, is there a second? Uh, Commissioner Runfield, seconds? Objections? Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous. Uh, yeah, thanks, Stephen, on your mic. Um, so we're I guess we're about to go into a community development block grant um, public hearing. But if there's anyone here who wanted to speak on anything, and and that public hearing, we have opportunities for people to speak. But if there's anyone who wants to speak on another topic, this will be our second citizens to be heard. So is there anyone in the chamber? And anyone on Zoom? Okay. So, um final agenda item. Okay, so this is a a hearing for um, community development block grant applications and they um they have a very specific script that I have to read. So it's about a page long, so bear with me while I read through this. I'm now opening the first Grand County Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing for twenty-four at five fifty PM on January second. Uh, the purpose of this public hearing is to provide citizens with pertinent information about the community development block grant program and to allow for discussion of the possible applications for the twenty twenty-four funding cycle. The grant money must be spent on projects benefiting primarily low and moderate income persons. Approximately, says approximately, but it looks like precisely, um, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars. Um, total will be available to the Utah, southern, southeastern Utah region in this funding cycle. Examples of eligible products, eligible projects include, but are not limited to construction of public works and facilities, i.e. sewer, water and sewer lines, fire stations, acquisition of real property. Provision of public services, e.g. food banks or homeless shelters and low to moderate income housing projects. In the recent past, Grand County has received funding for affordable housing projects and America's with Disabilities Act compliance improvements of Grand County facilities. Grand County's capital facilities, stormwater master plan, C I V priority and affordable housing plans are available upon request. These plans identify prioritized public infrastructure needs within Grand County. I ask that anyone with questions, comments, or suggestions identify themselves by name prior to speaking. The clerk will include your names in the minutes and we would like to specifically respond to your questions and suggestions during the hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this public hearing? Okay, please come forward and give your name.
So my name is Brandon McGuffey, the county chief with the Moonee Valley Fire Department. Uh, we are here requesting support for the community block grant, purchasing new fire truck, a rescue truck, much specifically for the fire department. Current rescue truck we have is a nineteen ninety-nine Ford F- one, or Ford F- five fifty. Uh, is very outdated, is twenty-five years old now and not the most reliable piece of equipment. It is our only rescue truck we have at Station One. It goes all throughout county. I, I looked online. I wanna say there's five thousand, one hundred miles of road inside Grand County. That truck could find itself on almost any of them. It's a little sketchy trying to go at highway speeds with what we have weight wise on that truck. We're also out of bin space on that truck. We cannot equip any more equipment, tools, jacks, airbags, bumps. We're just out of space on it. We have got a few quotes on current replacements. They're coming in around three hundred thousand. Or a replacement for that truck that has no equipment on it at all. That's embarrassing the truck. We have already purchased about seventy-five thousand dollars of rescue equipment to put on that truck if we were to receive that vehicle. We also have some strapping equipment for stabilizations and stuff that could possibly purchase this year in anticipation. Question.
Anyone have questions?
Did they have, did those quotes come with any timeline or availability?
Uh, yeah, they all have a thirty day timeline on them. They're pretty short-lived, but I don't anticipate.
I mean, are the trucks available or?
Yes, they are. Yep. We've looked at a few different ones locally, threw forward another F- one, or F- five fifty. We can get those quick with the beds already on them. We also love to do some custom built fire truck, uh, rescue trucks. It's about all available.
Okay. Thank you.
So I can't find it. Moonee Valley Fire Protection District. I just wanted to speak a little bit to the financial need that we have. Would help us. Um, as a fire district, we provide multiple services. We provide fire suppression throughout the county. Uh, fuels mitigation, um, extrication for both vehicle and aircraft incidents. Um, and we also provide the county's hazmat team. All of these services require different kinds of equipment. And so we often find ourselves being able to focus on one of those aspects and then not having the chance to focus on another. Our financial resources this year are going to equip a pumper engine, uh, which we should be receiving this year. Uh, and that pumper engine serves the purpose of providing fire suppression parts for the county where there are fire hydrants. And as you know, most of the county does not have fire hydrants. Um, your question was very apt as to equipment availability because this pumper engine was, the order for this was placed over two years ago and we're hoping we should get it this, um, spring. But the rescue truck that we're looking at has a much shorter time. But putting our financial resources towards this pumper engine leaves us with very little financial resources to replace our rescue truck. The, a general rule for fire apparatuses to be replaced within twenty years and this rescue truck is already, we, we doubt an extra five years, but, uh, we're really concerned that at some point it's gonna fail us. And, uh, if that truck fails us, that potentially means loss of life. We really, I would appreciate your support with this grant's application and helping us to provide this, um, lifesaving equipment term. And if there are any other questions? Thank you.
Um, be, before we take the next member of the public, I guess I have a question for staff. So is, um, fire trucks, is that the sort of thing that C D B G has funded in the past or is it in alignment with their criteria?
Um, it is an allowed expense and I believe there's a call out, um, specifically for, and the public safety equipment purchases. Because I think it's reality. How else do you pay for those?
Thanks. Um, anyone else like to speak? State your name.
Hi, I'm, uh, John Corkery from the Thompson Special Service District. I'm the chairman of that district. Um, and I'm here to, uh, well, the, the Thompson Special Service District is working to procure, procure additional reliable water sources for the Grand County rural hub of Thompson Springs. And so I'm here to ask, um, whether the county supports in, um, approving our, or supporting our grant ask for feasibility studies to secure more waters, uh, for Thompson Springs. So there's two main reasons for this initiative. Uh, the first and foremost is that Thompson Springs is currently only relying on one, uh, spring source. And so one water source and uh, that's a, it's, it's a, uh, it's risky business in the time of, uh, as with, uh, with climate change happening right now, um, the spring source that we're relying on has seen a, um, has seen a thirty year decline. So it's declined over the past thirty years and, um, we don't wanna solely rely on that single spring source, especially when other springs in eastern Utah have gone dry in recent times. So that's number one reason is to secure bright water future for Thompson Springs by securing an additional, uh, water source. The other one is for reasonable growth and development. Uh, if climate change, uh, shows us a wetter future, um, as we saw last year with the significant amount of water and, and snowpack coming in. And if we are to find a reliable source of, of water, um, we could see the potential for a small amount of reasonable growth and development in Thompson Springs, which I think would be good for the county and Thompson Springs in general. Um, so those are our, our two main reasons for going after this grant. Um, there is additional water resources available in the Thompson Canyon and Sager Canyon. And also in the Green River via the potential future Umpire Pipeline takeover. Uh, the T S S D has the will and desire to be the facilitator of bringing on the proper firms, personnel and equipment to both locate and determine the feasibility of the different sources that are available. But we need help with funding to make this happen. Therefore, the T S S D is seeking the support and sign off from the Grand County Commission on the following C B D G feasibility study grant asks. With the support of the Grand County Commission, the T S S D would like to ask the C B D G to fund the following feasibility studies. Um, feasibility study for drilling a well, uh, ballpark costs is twenty to thirty thousand dollars. Um, feasibility study for the Umpire Green Line River Pipeline project, the ballpark, ballpark cost for this is forty to sixty thousand dollars. Um, the Thompson Wash Flow Study for rebuilding a reservoir. The ballpark cost for this study would be twenty to, ten to twenty thousand dollars. And this would be a water flow study to see how much water comes down the wash over the course of a year. Uh, and then the fourth one would be the Old Spring Site Flow Study and Wetlands Delination Study with the ballpark cost of five to ten thousand dollars on that flow study. So that would be a flow study to see how much water is coming out of the Old Spring Site, which the B L M has asked us to do as the next step. And then the next step after that would be to do a wetlands delineation study. Uh, we've already done a botanical study. Um, and a preliminary wetland study and it's that preliminary wetland study determined that it is likely a wetland. And so now the B L M wants us to do a full wetlands delineation study. But they suggested that we do a, um, a water flow study on that old spring site before um, we move forward with the wetlands delineation study as if the water flow isn't good enough, might not be good for doing the wetlands delineation study anyways. Um, so I realize that there are several different potential water sources available that we're asking for feasibility studies on. And you know, we would like to pursue all of them, but we understand that there's limited funds available and that the county may only want to support some of these initiatives. Um, and so on the low end, if we were to go after the feasibility study for drilling a well and the two water flow studies, that would be what, that would be like kind of the minimum we'd like to ask for. Um, the other one, the next step would be to go with the wetlands delineation study as well. And that would be a ninety thousand dollars. If we just went with the, the first, the, the, sorry, if we just went with the first, the, the feasibility study for drilling well and two water flow studies, that'd be sixty thousand dollars. If we went with, um, if we added the wetlands delineation, that'd be ninety thousand dollars. And if we added the feasibility study for the Umpire Green River Pipeline, that'd be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars total grant ask for feasibility studies for water procurement. Uh, for source water procurement in Thompson Springs. So I'm hoping that, um, commission might have some questions and just wanna see if what you all think might be a good direction for the T S S D to go in. Cause this is a difficult task for me as an individual to make.
Any questions for John?
I guess my question's more for staff or whatever guidance supplement I get here. Are we making decisions tonight to support projects or are, is this just the opening of the public meeting or not?
So the applications are due by the January thirty-first and so we are asking for guidance on what you want, um, to put forth because I think the, the deadlines just turn around and then submitting everything. We don't wanna be in the eleventh hour, um, and waiting to the next meeting. I also believe at the next meeting you'd need to approve any subcontractor agreements that would need to be a part of the applications.
So it sounds like you're saying you want a decision from us, or at least a tentative decision from us at this meeting so that you can get things prepared to be finalized at the next meeting, so?
Yes, but I also think if need be, it could be, uh, waited, waiting. You could wait until the next meeting.
But you would like guidance?
Yes.
I guess, I, I know that we've had a lot of debate about a nonprofit, that maybe not debate's wrong word. We've had a lot of input. We've also, um, clearly the fire department and for me is an easy one. Um, for Thompson, I've spoke several times in the past about the need to do something for Thompson, but it, it's a little bit like there's three possibilities there. If we were gonna pick one or if we could get that into a nutshell, it would be easier to support, I think, because I, I don't think that we can just do the shotgun approach right now. Um, and I'm just speaking for myself, but it would help if that was clarified, if there was a single one that we could also attach within my mind, the fire department. But I, I'm looking for some guidance from some of the rest of you here as well. I don't wanna.
Uh, so do, I'm just, before we get too much into generalities, I, I don't know if there's someone here to present, present from. And we got a lot of input and wabi-sabi. Um, I
I, I had a question for J R actually, while he's still up there.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and also just wanted to recognize that, um, that, that J R is, is still, uh, taking questions on Thompson. We didn't really get through with that. But, but anyway, I, I wanna say that I very much appreciate J R's work on this. I know he's, he's done a a lot of, uh, a lot of research and a lot of, of work on getting this grant together as well as some of the other members of the T S S D. Um, do you, J R, do you see this? It's kinda like, like Bill called it shotgun approach. There are four different, um, kind of feasibilities or, or looking at four different sources of water. So that it's like they're similar, but they're all, they're all very different. And, and, um, I think that, uh, I think a shotgun approach is, was a, was a good way of putting that. And then you also broke down the Old Spring Flow Study and then the Wetlands Delination Study. Do you kinda see those as, as separate entities to J R or, or in my mind, you, it's hard to have one without the other. What, what were you thinking there?
Well, on the Old Spring, uh, site, the B L M suggested that we do the flow study first, uh, because that's a lot, I mean, if, if, if that comes back a negative, if there's not enough water flow, then there's no reason to do the more expensive wetlands delineation study. Um, so they're kind of the same, they're, they're, they're the same water source that we're looking at, but it's, it's two studies that needs to be done in order to get the B L M permit to move forward with developing that Old Spring Site. Um, so you know, if moving forward with the flow study could be a great way to, to start with that. Um, and then if, if that is a positive, then we could ask for funding to move forward with the wetlands delineation study. Um, so I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a two-part process. And also from working with you, it seems like the, that's kind of the most the, the, the the lowest hanging fruit of, of these four seems to be the flow study followed by the wetlands delineation study. Would you agree?
Um, yeah, I, I, well, the, the, yeah, the, the Old Spring Site redevelopment is the low hanging fruit in terms of the water that would be easiest to come by, but the B L M has made us jump over hurdle after hurdle after hurdle. And we also have the permit from the Division of Water Rights to drill two wells of the canyon. And drilling a well may be the best option at this point in time, especially if we were to drill a well on a private property. Um, or on sit la land potentially, and then we might not have to jump through as many hurdles. Or the B L M might be more reason, it might be more reasonable to, for the B L M to let us drill a well in a non-wetland area. Uh, there might be less hurdles to jump through there. So I think that, that feasibility study for drilling a well is a, um, also a very good path forward. Um, you know, the Umpire Pipeline, that's five to seven years out. I, you know, I, I think that that's a really great one too, but it, we have some time on that, so. So just my thoughts, yes.
Yeah, um, I think that these are all really important and I am very appreciative that you're, you individually are pushing these forward with folks up there. And so I would like to support them how we can. Um, but that being said, with, uh, Um but that being said, with the application deadline coming up, how close are? Um the projects to be ready to launch like in terms of the. Flow rates or the feasibility, are there contractors that you've got these bids from? Is there somebody like waiting that if we need to sign a contract with them in a couple of weeks, are we that close or is that? Still a ways out?
Um so we've worked with Sunrise Engineering and they have shown interest in helping with. Helping us with all of these tasks and I think it would be, we could get. Uh I mean, they've already, I've already talked to them about like the the ballpark estimates. Um we would need to go through and uh get three quotes from three different entities. Um and I I think that uh. You know, doing like a feasibility study for drilling a well and two and the water flow studies, I don't think it would be difficult in that timeline to get those quotes. For the C B D G application deadline.
And uh what was your kind of ballpark on the flow study?
The old spring site flow study uh was five to ten thousand dollars. I mean, the the other one is the uh the the reservoir flow studies, the Thompson Wash Study. There's a lot of water that comes down the wash during flash floods and just on the spring runoff and whatnot, so that's. That's a bigger flow study, however, it's not just one spring, it's a whole wash. So that's more like ten to twenty thousand dollars. Um and then the feasibility study for drilling well would be twenty to thirty thousand. You take the high of all three of those, it totals around sixty thousand dollars, which. Um when I went to the C B D G meeting, sixty thousand dollars seemed like a reasonable uh grant ask amount. Well feasibility studies for what we're trying to do um. About my ways on Tamara Dock Center.
I'm there's a part of me that's wondering if we can't find five or ten thousand dollars somewhere else to just start chipping away at it. And not feel so rushed to to try to meet these deadlines and have contracts in place and reviewed by attorneys and stuff. But that's just kind of my initial gut.
Well, I think getting uh one, two, three, four, five, or whatever the number is so that because it. It just probably isn't likely that we're gonna be able to do the entire thing at this time, so. Get a little more organized with individual.
Yeah.
Projects.
I I the the reason I say that is because I'm sure as you're well aware that it's a pretty competitive grant of of the funding that's out there. And so. Um I just wanna make sure that we put our best foot forward to, you know, to. To really have it teed up and say, this is what we got right here, ready to go.
How soon could uh if we just went for the drilling of the well feasibility study? Is that close to being able to launch?
Uh yeah, I mean the. Hiring a firm to do a feasibility study would be an easy thing to launch for. Obviously, once we do the feasibility study and another part of this is that. We're also asking for a C I B grant. Um and in that grant, we're asking them for an underground water locator device. Uh to help us find underground water in the area. So that would kind of dovetail if we get that device and then we also have a feasibility study for the well. Um then we would be able to potentially locate a reliable source. A reliable area to drill a well and that would be very beneficial, but I think to answer your question. We could hire a firm to do that relatively quickly. It's not. Now, it's not the whole project of drilling the well, it's just getting the feasibility study. Uh. A firm to 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 have Sunrise Engineering just give us a quote and a couple others choose one, so.
How? Likely? I mean, I know this is a very. Competitive grant. Is this a type, um have they approved this type of uh grant in the past?
Um that they definitely approve feasibility and other planning studies. I was told that there. They know about four times the amount of funding asks than what they have to afford this year. Um and. Free they're free fire trucks because Grant is for four counties, Grand, San Juan, Carpen and Emory, Emory, and they know. Three fire trucks, which that alone uh is the money they have. I don't know if they'll go with fire trucks, but it's they definitely said it's gonna be a tough year. Um one thing I would know is there is a floor amount of thirty thousand dollars. So if you select any of the individual ones. Or a combination, you need to make sure you're hitting thirty thousand. And I personally like Kevin's idea of, I know it's not. All of the projects, but if there was a way we could help move along flow study.
Mike? I'd definitely be in support of uh finding funding, uh being our discretionary fund, something uh to get, check some of the boxes. Uh I personally, I'm interested if you already have some uh two well approvals, uh looking towards a feasibility study. That just seems in my mind to get things done faster. Uh of which it is always better in government. Uh but that's where I stand is looking towards that well and we'll find money on the other uh the smaller tags.
Any other discussion on the Thompson proposals?
So I guess with that, then we would like to, the T S S D would just like to officially request. Um the county commission to support. Um the number one request for a feasibility study for drilling a well with the C B D G. Grant asked this year.
And what's the dollar amount on that?
That's the thirty thousand dollars. Should be the base though.
Good, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak?
I have a question for Mallory again. Now, you I I can't remember if I read it here or one of the other emails. It's also like when we as a county support, send a supporting letter for one of the grants. Then we also rate them as our first choice, second choice. Did we do, are we supposed to do that?
Um you you don't need to do that. My understanding is how they will process these is if. If you did both Thompson and the fire department, they would go through and rank them um based on the criteria. It provided. And then the top ranking one would go forward.
The ranking.
And the second project, they wouldn't consider funding unless everybody else's projects were funded. So it would be like they wouldn't wanna fund two grand county projects and nothing for San Juan County. So first they wanna make sure everybody is satisfied.
Okay, and and given that the the grant requests are. Three or four times as big as the amount of money they have, it's you're saying it's unlikely that they would get to. Definitely two grand county projects approved.
Correct, and I think maybe part of it is the question. Will they? Go with a lot of fire trucks? Studies this year, because it sounds like that's. That's where they're at, and I think the city is also submitting a project and I saw Castle Valley. I noticed a public hearing, so they might also have a have a project, but those would. Be their own competing project.
Okay. So I I guess I'm curious, you know, we had a previous meeting and also through a lot of emails, we got a lot of support for a. Wabi-sabi proposal. Um but no one, no representative from wabi-sabi is here now. If we want, I'm I'm not saying I'm in favor of it, but we could still approve it or. Or is the does the fact that they're not here mean that they're withdrawing? What, how does that work?
Well, we to my knowledge, never had this circumstance because we've only. I think done three C D B G grants in the past two decades and I don't think that there was any. Uh. Any competing grants within the county, so. From what I've read and researched, the big thing. I don't wanna say that this hearing is just for show, but it it kind of is. So I I think you could go forward with that application even though there's nobody here. Um and nobody is here, I imagine, because we've told them that the county. Doesn't have an interest in changing the stance of supporting nonprofit sponsorships.
Mike?
In in part with saying this uh. It it seems like we have our one, two, three, I mean, uh at least a listing of what what we would like. I know that we want to uh support uh all projects. But it's it's pretty easy going in my mind to vote on this tonight. Uh unless there's more discussion.
Could someone remind me what the dollar amount was? Was it two hundred or three hundred thousand dollars? Uh Stephen.
Just just noting for the commission, on the agenda, this is listed under discussion items, public hearing. Um it would technically be best practice to move to move it under an action item. If the commission was inclined to vote on it today, because otherwise publicly it's listed as a discussion item, public hearing. But that doesn't.
We don't need an actual approval, um we just put it as. Like a straw poll or, yeah, we need to direct staff.
So so maybe we can direct staff to prepare things for the next meeting in such a way that they're not wasting time on things that aren't gonna be supported at the next meeting? Does that work for you, Stephen?
Yes, yes, that's correct. There's just a noted motion on on the item, so I just wanted to make sure we weren't making a motion unless we want to move it to an action item.
Thanks. Um so it sounds. I, you know, I personally don't have strong feelings about this, but the impression I've gotten from other people is that there's support for the. Fire Engine proposal from the Fire District. Um and and I see an additional thumbs up there. Um. And then staff is saying that it's. Well, I get, I'll interrupt myself. Because the Thompson proposal is pretty small. Do you still think that they they're just, they just have one goal that they they're not gonna prove two grand county projects before? Making sure everyone else gets at least one project, even if one of those projects is. You know, it doesn't depend on the dollar amounts, is it?
Um that's my understanding in would be in the criteria.
Would the T S S D submit the application and we just send a letter of approval or we would submit the application?
So we submit it um and then all of the curement come with us recording. Um and if you all want to proceed with one of. Or with the feasibility studies, what I would ask is just. Um to have a set date, like the twenty fourth. Having all the materials so that we can submit it and not be in the eleventh hour scrambling to correct stuff.
Okay, so so again, I'm just trying to reflect what I'm what I'm hearing from the rest of the commission. It sounds like people wanna give our, you know, our first place support to the Fire Engine. And given that's the case, it means getting additional money for Thompson. It seems like a long shot. And so it seems like our options are either not to do that or perhaps. Till Thompson, if they can do all the work of getting the application together and it doesn't contribute much staff time. Then we then if, again, that might be a lot of work on their part for what. Sounds like low odds. But but I I guess I I have heard from staff that we that we don't, you know, we don't wanna submit five applications because that's a lot of work. And only one of them's gonna get funded. And so.
I I think. That it could be fair to look at it as there. I mean, if they go with purchasing equipment, I would imagine for one entity, that that's gonna be kind of. The tone they set for all of them. So if they're approving a fire truck, I think they do it for all the fire truck applications. If they aren't. Then that's where it would also be nice to have something in there, so I guess what I'm saying is I. Would not object to doing Thompson's as well as long as. We we have everything put together and it's a plug in shop.
Okay, so may maybe rephrasing that, so you're you're saying it might happen that. Because there are three different entities asking for fire trucks and they might not have enough money for three fire trucks, they. Think it's more diplomatic just to say no to all the fire trucks. And in that case, it would be good if we had some backup proposal that's not a fire truck.
I don't know about that. I I don't know, it's hard, I.
I mean, and certainly we can, we can tell them that that's our favorite thing.
What I'm thinking too is uh getting everything organized for the the feasibility for the drilling a well. Would set us up really well for applying for other types of funding. You know, so if if in the long run, you know, I don't think it would be a waste of their time to get that, try to get that organized by the twenty fourth. Because if we decided that, you know, the next meeting that no, we only wanna submit one. We would still have all that information to uh go forward and apply for a different. Find other ways to find that funding, thirty thousand. I I've done, I was just thinking that the work would be done, so it would be, it's difficult to find other. Funding sources. So at least it's open to either uh.
If I would um to be honest, say leaves them open to find more funding. Um opportunities because I I will be honest, you know, it's been a bit challenging of. We have some really big county projects that I think we're slowly picking up momentum on. Um and so I think it it would be nice for the county to. Outside of this focus on our projects, and I think that's. What the what the city does and why they're maybe a little more rigid in sponsoring our.
Yeah, I I think if I had to pick just one and not to put the two against each other, but. In reality, that's kind of what we would be doing is uh I think the. The rescue vehicle has potential to be more beneficial to more of the county. And because it is a bigger ask, it's not something that. Uh know how else we could come up with it otherwise. And so if we have the ability to prioritize it, I would prioritize that project. I don't know if by submitting multiple ones, you know, we're kind of giving them the pick and choose which one. Um. So. That's just where I'm at.
Yeah, I I agree with that. I I mean, if you wanna look at ranking them, why the. Fire Department by far reaches the greatest number of people in this county as far as the good that they do. Um I think right behind that is that it's clear that. Thompson Springs needs help in a lot of different areas from the county overall, and it isn't. Just with the water board. I mean, we're talking about setting up the commission for the replat. There's. There's ongoing needs out there that that community has, so it's. It to pit them against each other, I don't think is a fair idea. I think if we look at it. You know, in a in a staggered which one's gonna reach the most, I think the fire department. For me clearly does that at this point, and then we start looking for some other ways um. To try and help Thompson out there and I, you know, I don't know how far we wanna go into the wabi-sabi thing, but I. I believe that at some point, we're gonna have to start outlining. What we wanna do for nonprofits, now, I know that there's discussion earlier about four sixteen robbing our economic diversification, but. We gave out over a million dollars that could have helped this community of Thompson or some more valuable places, and we'd yet. To see any reporting for those grants that were handed out, so. It it hardly makes any sense to, without having a very thorough discussion on nonprofits moving forward, how are we gonna make sure that they are? Really um living up to. Deserving the money that we've handed out to, and so I'm. I'm one, two, three right here on these issues, and I think that if we need to, we'd better just make it one, so that we have the best chance of getting that for the fire department. And so. I I I don't wanna be bad guy here and say we shouldn't go with Thompson Springs, because I'm as involved with Thompson Springs as anybody other than maybe Jacques is. Out there, and I see the needs they have, but I also don't wanna. Lose the ability to help out as many people as the fire department does, so it's it's a tough call, but that's where I'm standing on it.
So should we perhaps take a straw poll with three options, one is support fire truck only, another is. Support both that and Thompson, another is, I guess undecided.
Sure. I'm open to that.
Okay, so if you, if you agree with, if I'm, correct me if I'm mischaracterizing you, Bill. I think Bill was suggesting that maybe it's best just to um. Support only the fire truck, because there's the danger that. They might support our small, smaller proposal rather than our bigger one, if we have two of them on there. So people who lean toward that position, raise raise your hands. Three, four, anyone on Zoom? Say anything.
I think Trish is talking, but she's muted.
Oh, Trish, you're muted.
I don't know if I have a hard line on any of this, and I'll go with the flow is what you guys feel is best.
Okay, so that sounds like a, okay, so, so people who are kind of undecided on this question. Raise my hand, yeah, I think Trish just said that, okay, and then people who would like to um also. Put Thompson's proposal in there in addition to the fire truck, looks like one vote for that, Jacques.
I'd vote for that, too. I mean, this, see, I'm like.
Okay. Okay, so if I, it's like there were four, four people who are leaning toward. Fire district rescue vehicle only, and two or at most three people who would wanted to do both. In our straw poll.
Could I add a little bit?
Sure.
Mallory, would there be any value in discussing this with Tamara, I think that she probably has the most knowledge regarding this of anybody, and so that we don't make a decision to exclude. Thompson tonight that we see. Where she weighs in on it, because we don't wanna do something that she would not recommend, we we wanna do this and. Clearly, the way she thinks the best avenue for us to get something for the county here out of this grant process.
So I. Talked with Tamara, um, and I, I think they tried to stay out of this and. More or less wish us luck, wish all of you luck in making that decision, uh, she did say. She thinks that there will be um. A lot of questions coming up about feasibility or other planning processes and using this money for that. But I'm, I would not feel comfortable saying anything in infinitely, you know, I I'm not sure.
Okay, so it sounds like you've already tried to squeeze information out of Tamara, and she was not.
Yes, I think she was very much uh.
Well, sitting on that board, I certainly don't mind reaching out to her and discussing it with her, and then when we come back to this final meeting. At the next meeting anyway, or do we wanna have that done at this meeting, so.
Well, um. I think we, like I said, might need to have some contractor agreements on the next. Agenda, I suppose there's could be. Latified. I don't know, part of me says. Just do them both, um, but I also think. But there's. I I think that that's just passing the buck. The CDBG of. You guys decide, and maybe that's a good.
Mike says.
Oh, yeah, Mike.
Like stated before, uh, I'm in favor of uh looking towards the CDBG uh. Grant application for the fire truck, but I would like future consideration in staff time finding the feasibility of. Funding the importance of water, uh, totally somewhere else. Uh, but again, I mean, who's gonna knock? When you need a fire to save your life? And it doesn't show up because it broke down halfway.
I think you.
Go ahead.
You could give um staff direction to proceed with. The um fire department's application, and if they wanna put too much pressure on you, and you wanted to talk with Tamara, and you had the sense that. You know, there was a good chance or it seemed feasible.
I can do that tomorrow and get back to the entire body, you know, email. I mean, I don't mind doing that, I have a great relationship with her, I've been up there for the last year and meetings, so.
Okay, and then.
I think I can get some guidance out of her, yeah, or no.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not opposed to, if if they both have a chance, then I'm I'm all for free money, but it sounded like we kind of had to pick one, but if if. If it's up to us to pick, I'll pick them all, so.
Well, I I mean, I don't wanna make this more complicated, but there is the chance that they just, they're not gonna give Grand County three hundred thousand dollars. And then I guess I'd rather have the smaller Thompson proposal than nothing, you know, if that's the case. But but I think Bill pointed out correctly, or we could hurt ourselves by giving them that option to. Yeah, so I, both of those seem possible to me.
Trying to guess what they're gonna do.
Okay, so it sounds like we're we are definitely gonna proceed with the fire truck application, and based on discussions with. Tamara, we may also proceed with a Thompson.
And I'm all just uh for straw polling, I'm I'm comfortable with our. Representatives that body communicating with staff and other community members.
I don't know how, if we can.
I just don't wanna bring it to the eleventh hour with trying to communicate with seven of us, so.
And it's just a question of what options are gonna be available at the next meeting. And we don't wanna waste time preparing options that we're we're not gonna choose for the paperwork, but. But if we know before the next meeting that there's a good argument for one of these things, that I think that.
I would say you could maybe direct staff. To do Thompson, or I'm sorry, fire definitely, and. Thompson and the.
Anyone else have anything to say about CDBG grants? Case, I've got a one line left on my.
Oh, it's good, the script isn't done.
The script is not done, so. Quote, seeing no further comments, I'm adjourning this public hearing at. Six thirty six. Six thirty eight. Okay, thank, thanks, everyone. Um, that also brings us to the end of our agenda, so um. There's no objection, I will adjourn this meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Oh, should we have.
Have a good day.
Citizens, we heard before we adjourned?
We did say.
Oh, we did, we did, I I thought we talked about doing it back.